Alright.
Is everyone here?
Yes.
And Bob's with us tonight, so let's pull and mute the order and we'll keep an eye out to see if Sarah shuts up.
Okay.
When's agenda?
I've been there for a minute, I don't know what's happening.
I printed up the minutes. We'll faint, we'll work hard.
I read it for the end. I need corrections or revisions or...
We got too many numbers.
Right?
Too many numbers.
Yeah.
Okay, you got it. You already have it, Austin?
I did.
You have access to whatever.
Bob, you need a copy of the agenda?
Yeah.
I'm all set, thanks, Tony.
We can leave him a copy of the minutes.
Right, in the mailbox.
Alright. The minutes. Everyone's had a chance to look at them over the last several days, or today, actually, it was today, the last. I guess the last revision came for today. This is both. Okay.
I have nothing to add to it.
Not anyone, you're good, I thought the same.
Like a motion that we accept in the minutes?
What did I do there? Always favorite.
Hi.
Nobody. Closing solution. Move on. Bob, public comment? We're hoping for a public comment at this point. Do any?
I have no public comment, but thank you for letting me join your meeting and as I said, I apologize now that when I dump off, I just um I have to go to a P O C D meeting at six thirty, so, thank you.
Okay. So, next item on the agenda, I think we might as well get this, we'll go with, even later. Next, one day is a holiday.
Okay.
So we can't, apparently we can't meet here on holidays.
We can meet somewhere else. They said, true Bob, we can't be here?
Yeah, that's correct, we can't have a meeting on holidays, so you can either just cancel and move on to the following Monday, or just go to a different day that week.
Rather than cancel. We've only got a couple weeks left, right, so, I don't know how much progress we made tonight. It could be a reward, it could not be getting, so, I was, the rest of next week, what? I believe, the week to twentieth, so Monday will be the twentieth.
Actually, my only open day is the, is Friday, the twenty fourth.
No, actually.
Or Saturday.
What?
We can't, we couldn't do another one day, I mean, like, we can go to different places on Monday?
Bob, maybe you can answer that, I understood we couldn't have a meeting because it's a national, it's a holiday.
So, my understanding is that we can't have any municipal business done on a holiday, so.
Okay, so, doesn't matter where we are, we can't have it, okay.
Okay.
So the twenty fourth is open and I have Saturday the twenty fifth. No Saturday for you?
Friday would be better for me, what time of day? Okay, for me, we have to be the same for me, Friday.
I mean, I'm, I'm just not all that.
I mean, we could have it without you unless you want, unless you feel strongly about being here. I'm sorry?
You're gonna choose to do a Friday in the dayton?
I think.
If everybody can do it. Or, well, I could do it, or I could, can do it, and I'll see if I can get out of work early enough. This is four.
We turned it four, yeah.
Get here.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Good one, thank you.
Not trying to expose you, John, just trying to get it in.
No, I understand, and then, so then we'll be meeting on Friday and then the following Monday.
Right.
Which may be good, I mean, we'll be good.
Yeah.
So that's this from, on that, on that, on that.
Yeah, twenty four.
Twenty one, then.
And I will. So it'll be a special meeting then.
Okay.
Okay. Good. Alright, any members, you can report back on anything they've worked on over the past week? Yes. So now you're trying to listen. I need to go in.
Last week I presented those numbers and they were based on lot numbers and items that I had from twenty eighteen blended with the current year's budget, I had the opportunity to stop in the Texas S F's office this week and I got the updated lot numbers. So, they've increased the number. So that would mean that all the numbers that I gave last week would be reduced in their impact of lot, so. Say, I didn't expect it to go very, so. Originally, I had taken town budget to twenty one million plus and divided it by twenty nine forty nine lots. Even, there are currently three thousand four hundred and twenty four taxable lots.
There are similar ones.
Three thousand four hundred and forty four. So again, if there was no income to the town of any kind other than property tax, that would then be six thousand two hundred and eighty three dollars per lot. Comes out to five hundred and twenty four dollars per month. But we do have additional income from other sources and that is yet to be increased and there's a potential to do a lot of things that we don't do for income, but if you then just took what we collect in our current property mill rate tax system, that's approximately seventeen million dollars. So that's seventeen million dollars, if it was divided equally, a lot would be four thousand nine hundred and sixty four dollars annually. It comes out to four hundred and fourteen dollars a month. So what I asked him to do for me, and I don't have it yet, and we have to, I apologize, I couldn't remember what program he said it was in, I believe the grand list might be in some kind of an Excel program, but I could be quoting the wrong one, I don't have any of that stuff on my computer. So he was suggesting I ask if someone else does, he could submit that grand list to someone that I could then.
Wait, are you?
Okay, because the, the purpose of having that is then with the current mill rate, looking at the spread by that head gone in twenty eighteen, for how many people are in the one thousand dollar category, two thousand, three thousand, back then, the majority of the people in town were in the four thousand and seven thousand dollar range taxes. That was twenty eighteen, that was, the mill rate hasn't changed drastically from then, but if dividing everything annually gets us to just under five thousand, that's right in the middle of that spread, so if we were to, if it was ever done and they switched to this system, but not taxing by mill rate, but by lot and services, the majority of people in town are already in that range. Again, I had suggested last week that those that were negatively impacted by it could then be potentially candidates for the circuit breaker program, which would then increase the amount of tax, potentially the tax refund from the state, the reimbursement for it. Were you able to find out where that was in the?
No, I had, somebody on the finance committee is gonna have to tell us because Darrell didn't know.
I asked Darrell also.
Yeah, he's at, he has no idea where that one shows up.
So we have to find, Bob, do you know?
Fortunately, I don't, sorry.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, he did mention it, it was probably just somebody on the finance committee would have an idea where that shows up.
Yeah, so I didn't get that answer, but again, in assessing it this way, we would see who was negatively impacted. Do they potentially qualify for the programs so that we get reimbursed by the state? We still don't have the answers to any of that yet, or I don't have those answers, I gotta do that math. I went to Teresa Pences and sat with her and talked with her, but it was short afternoon, she was on her way out, I was, I didn't get home from work early enough to get any true time with her, but just quickly, she rummaged through her files and immediately came up with at least thirty individuals that easily fit into this program situation. She revealed to me that what I had suggested about charitable donations, helping to fund those who can't afford to do it, she says, that's already going on on a private, personal basis in some cases here in town, there are already people voluntarily donating money to help cover people's taxes so they can stay in the home.
Oh, no, that's, I didn't know that either.
I did, I was suggesting that type of donation, no, certainly not, I don't know to what extreme, I didn't, I didn't want details from her, I don't wanna know.
Now, of those people, she, did she know if they were participating in the program already?
She knew many that did, yes, she, that's her job is to help.
Those were unique people, in addition to the people that are already in the program? That'll probably not.
I don't, I don't know, because I wasn't gonna, I didn't wanna ask too many specific questions, it's, I'm not privileged to know that.
John, is it a town administered program or privately done, how is that, who runs that?
The contributions.
Contributions, that would have done personally on the side, there's no organized pattern. These are just people helping their neighbors, but she did say that, and Darrell told me that there are currently sixty one homeowners on the circuit breaker program.
One more than we thought.
But when I discussed the financial criteria that we were given for those programs and we were questioning how someone living on this low in income, apparently she said there's a lot more to even imagine.
So. You, you seem to know anything?
Yeah.
Yeah, for, for while, yes. So with all of those programs, some of the people are put out, so yeah, there's, there is a lot of things out there in an attempt to help these people get by.
Right, that's for the year.
So out of the, I'll rattle this number off, I can write it for you later. There were three hundred, three thousand four hundred and forty four lots, taxable lots in town, a hundred and twenty seven of them commercial, two thousand five hundred and eighty two are residential, one is a public utility, two hundred and eighty one lots are vacant, and that's a mix of commercial and residential. There are four hundred and thirty two lots that are in the four ninety program, farm and farming program, I think, four hundred and thirty two. There are five in the ten mil program, and I remember I didn't know when, I never learned last time where that was. The ten mil program is in the program that no longer can anyone be registered onto. The number in twenty eighteen was higher, so those lots are diminishing in number and they are taxed at only ten mil, whereas the rest of the town is taxed at twenty eight, twenty six, five.
And that's no longer in effect?
It, it's, there are five still grandfathered in, but no one else can get on that program.
Yeah.
There are three apartment, apartment dwelling classes, and thirteen categorized as industrial. Two hundred and nineteen lots are not included in that number, they're taxes out. That'll be, that'll be, Avalonia, Townland Property, Churches, they're not included in the thirty four forty four, so they're not included in those financial numbers I gave.
Yeah.
That's what I've gotten, so Darrell's, there's now sixty one people. He told me sixty one in the circuit breaker, on the homeowners, which is a circuit breaker program.
Yeah, well, all of those lots, yeah, all of them have, oh.
That's correct, there are two hundred and eighty one that are lots that are vacant. In several years ago, the town had eighty nine people in the circuit breaker.
Wow.
So is that? I mean, this is, okay.
Interesting, more than we thought, we thought it was about forty, sixty one.
Yeah, that's no question, right, and so just the, the last thing I wanna comment on is, so where I'm, the next step, what I'm attempting to do is try to get those numbers from the grand list, so I can see what the spread is, so that I can see if the bill was equalized, how many are affected negatively, how many are affected positively, see where that balance is, and then there are optional ways, honestly, so far only talking about equally dividing the bill. It can also potentially, if you're looking at parcel fee for services, could be divided equally, could be provided residential and commercial at a separate rate, that was the last question I had last week. And then another way it could also be run is actually based on the payment or services, that's a much more complicated math project, but that would be looking at on each lot, what services are rendered, what premium they're giving for those, that would be if the board finance decided do a hybrid system and still keep some of it as property tax based system and the rest is free fee for services, they might gradually implement it, slowly remove services from the town and add them to the list of fees for services if they wanted to do this smaller lots, so.
The, the list that he's gonna give you in Excel, if you don't have it, it can be, it's in the menu.
Or he, like, usually Darrell would send it to you.
Right, that's what he was saying, you have someone else, but I can't remember if Excel sent me the program and said, where are these guys? Pretty sure, okay, but you would need it in a PDF file, not, and swipe and convert it, then I'd give it to you in a PDF file, or for those that, yes.
Yeah, all I need is the spread and the numbers.
Okay. And get that to me also, and I'll see your, like. Any other reports on information, any?
Only two high problems, why we directed, and they did it by accident, we had a C H F A, U S B A event over in the library in the formal hall, and they needed out of paper, and I thought, thought it was pretty interesting. They gave us a partnership for small communities, projected property, if the north side, and they projected from the year two thousand twenty to the year two thousand forty, minus eighteen, so there will be, right now, we have, according to them, we have five thousand two hundred and thirty nine people, and you have projected, we had four thousand two hundred and forty nine people. So around nine hundred and fifty six people less in twenty years.
Twenty, eighty three will be in.
That's kind of.
I don't know how they predicted that.
They could have taken, again, the whole senior population, you know, like I did this spread of, you know, sixty five to ninety, and you know, if I, I'd have to break it down by year, but I'm not going to, but if you take that and you look at it from where their longevity may be, that could be how they're coming up with that, you know?
Well, I know, was that with, you know, the C H F A, U S B A, is, is that number adults only, or adults and children? And I think there's a median income, there's more, I mean, the people, the number of people. I think that's all, adults and children. Yeah, I think it's just single, so.
So that means that number of people goes down, the tax burden in the spread. The reason call for economic development, you know?
Absolutely.
It's gotta, it's gotta be part of it.
Yeah, we need more housing for people.
More housing, we need some, well, plus it is.
And we also need the disaster.
If people, or, right, I mean, we need some economic driver to get people to be here.
Right.
I think state for the fix, yeah.
Okay, any other comments on information?
No.
Okay. Moving on then. We talked last week about, well, we had a discussion in the vote, that we would, the things that we would look to do going forward, we could age base, at this point sixty five was the retire rate, the term that we, I don't wanna use the term elderly at sixty five, I have a problem with that.
Oh.
Um, so, the sixty five within the year, the cutoff. No age, none on disability, obviously, so we didn't have that discussion. From there, you know, we need to start to come to some conclusions about what we're going to be putting forward, and we have had some conversations about that. And if I could, just to really blend together, items five, six, and seven. I should probably be putting together, and this is a draft, completely open for the committee to move any way you want and change it, but I put this together. It's time to run it.
Yeah.
And so, the purpose of this is to not only just show a graph, but also maybe use this as a basis of conversation tonight about what we'll be recommending and how we're going to use our community. Well, we tried to sign on to the, the meeting and then share this with you, but I wasn't able to do that.
So, I've got to, actually, I'm glad you interrupted, I've gotta leave, I gotta be on that six thirty Zoom meeting also, so, thank you for letting me join you, and I'll be back again at one of your future meetings, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And again, I wanna emphasize, this is a draft, I just opened for critiques. So what I thought we'd do is just take a minute to look at this, and the basic format was to show what we, why we're here, and in the background, this pretty much comes from the state report in twenty fifteen, it seemed to hit all the buttons that we need to talk about, so, with one or two minor warning changes.
I got this from Darrell, this two thousand twenty one. They told you municipalities increase property tax, and it tells different requirements. Like, we put down for the fifty five, and I think the question had come up for spouses, someone. This says, freeze continues for supply, only spouse who is at least sixty two.
Right.
So I didn't know if we had that, we'll probably not put that.
That's the kind of thing that we, as we go through this, and whatever changes, the committee, whatever decisions we make as a committee, we'll just put it in, this is the, at this point, shell, what we need to do. And I listed the additional property tax relief programs that are in place, and the optional programs. Okay, on the next page, sorry, goes on to the nursing, the current tax relief programs. This is where we give a, and I give a, for the committee board, what are we spending here? Because this is a spending program, and, you know, I need, because Darrell told me, he doesn't have the numbers, the only one, like, against board. So I was hoping Sarah would, would be here tonight, I also told Sarah, if she couldn't get in, to call me, so I'm guessing she's not trying to get in tonight. But I will see about finding out that information.
You know, I looked at the budget the other day, and the volunteer fire department, what's in there currently is about fifty eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, I have that.
And all the numbers we've had brought out, it's higher.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, and so I, it was interesting, because I saw the same things, and we talked about twenty one thousand or something, so it's.
Yeah, and what they're reversing about, you know?
And was that budgeted?
Yes, yes.
Budgeted for, not necessarily for the payout.
Right, right. So then, our committee focus was on tax relief, for basically, and that's where I've got this recommendation, and I just put this in here based on my sense of what we talked about at the time. Obviously, this is what we have to come to an agreement on, so what we're gonna recommend, right? And then after that, it's the long term items. I'm willing. I printed up something, oh, I did, the last, I think it was the last day.
Yes, yes.
I typed, I, I changed the, I reworded your lineup on the figure, so it was more, what you were doing, it was a first person kind of, so I just wrote it as a statement back, yeah, because I wrote it as, as part of the minute. Exactly, and so I just converted it to this, so any thing that you wanna change, move around, however, on this one, please feel free to do that. So, these are the items I came up with in long term, right? Obviously open for whatever it's going, put in there.
I kinda did the same thing, I just went down with, first, well, it's got an age, way away.
Right, but we just, so then, some of the information people are looking for, and said we needed to provide, the sheet shows the existing program on the top.
Yeah.
And then I just created a spreadsheet, and again, on the lower half, and these numbers can be, we've had to come up as a committee and say, this is what we wanted.
This is something I was gonna recommend tonight as well, and so, and may I just add another thing to that?
Gotcha, yeah.
I was going to suggest that we ask Darrell of the sixty one, we don't need to know people's names, but where they fit in the current circuit breaker, so from where they're currently fit, what, what category do they fall in, and how much did it cost us per, you know? So if you took the current circuit breaker and he were to add, yes, and he were to add, we were to add a column, and in that column, it would tell us what the town is currently.
Number taxpayer.
Well, not the current town, what they're currently getting, quote, from the state, you know, what is it, what is the amount, so if we were to do your thing, in total.
In total, it's about fifty thousand.
But what I was thinking, if we looked at it in terms of by category, if we did it by category breakdown, and then use that same dynamic with those sixty people, if we were to do it this way, what would the additional cost be to the town? Because this is the state, this would be additional to the town.
Yeah, in that column to the far right, you'd have the final line, that's the total, total impact.
Right, right, and then we can see what additional impact, if we did it down here, to the town would be, because that would be the town expense.
Because the town's not doing anything extra now.
Correct.
It will.
If they.
Could be encouraged something like this.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
It will.
Yeah.
Right, so that's what we had.
So, little more than thirty, forty, fifty percent, yeah.
Once we have our place, then we can find that number off.
Right.
No, they wanna update. We're not doing that.
No, we're not going to install. I had that happen to me once in the middle of the presentation.
Oh, gosh.
Windows update.
Yeah.
The whole thing shut down.
Oh, yeah.
Forty people waiting for this. So, if I understand, just kind of just to make sure I understand, so.
Correct.
Under the proposed, we'll then have to show the total amount that we estimate, then, how much does? Then how much does state give?
Yeah.
And then the result, how much would be left for the town?
Right. So I think we. Yeah, I think we can do it like if he took this existing and if he said, it's the sixty one families or people. Who falls into this category and what does it cost us by dollar and then everywhere down and then we would have to then look at. If we change the percentage, then we have to hear who falls where there and then um, add that amount of money onto this column. You follow me? And that would be the increase.
So I also added a number taxpayer.
Yeah, yeah. If you put that number of taxpayers on the left hand side.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Number in the.
Oh, and how many all underneath? Yeah.
Yeah. How many any trade?
Yeah. Then I think we have a better picture of a from a uh, breakdown of. Income level.
Right. It's still an estimate because we don't lose them a lot. But it is better information for people to figure out the impact.
And we could use this with the existing people. If they were to have gotten this, then that's how much it would cost us now. And then if we got more people, you know, they at least have an approximation.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, maybe this way that the circuit breaker people already got there.
Right.
So if we set a flat figure. For. For the program. It's very easy to follow. You know, if you make, or I I don't know. I took. As a single people, we thirty thousand. The next week to the week, then people for sixty thousand. And basically, it was fifty five thousand, I believe it was for seventy five percent of the median income. So I just said that I don't get up to sixty. Because it's basically a relief for seniors. On taxes.
Mm hmm.
And I think that's what a lot of seniors need. They keep saying, and I keep hearing that, you know, seniors are, you know, they need help. It will help help adjust the same people. From circuit breaker. You know, add anybody new.
We it would probably encourage more people to participate if we change the level, we change the um, income level up. So that would.
Well, we're not changing the state.
No, 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 no.
Just pay it a little.
Correct.
You're presenting it.
Correct.
We well, we would do as proposals, just as I understand it. The. The program is the minimum. And Darryl will need to calculate. Based on this to report to the state. But that'll have no impact on how much we totally give. Uh, under whatever we propose.
Right.
So, so. Because it's going to expand. A number of people because we're raising the income level and it's going to, and we're. We're, I think, going to propose that we give more money.
Right.
To those that at least are in the lower. Income. On category. Is that?
Yeah. But yeah.
Our local. Yeah, right.
Because we really can't talk.
Yeah, no, but the the public would, I think, the public's only going to see. Our proposal, whatever we come up with from modified, that's the only thing that the public will see.
Mm hmm.
Right. Darryl was going to have to deal with. Doing this other report to figure out what he can get for the town. But the people in the town, whatever we come up with, that's all they're going to say.
Right.
Because it's irrelevant to them.
Because the only thing that shows what I took the letter out that he sent and the only thing it said the income limits for this year, it really is not a breakdown. Of the circuit breaker. It just gives down a uh, our forty nine thousand one hundred for married or forty for an individual. And so it doesn't have all of this breakdown in the letter that goes out to residents.
No.
So uh, because I thought I could get the circuit breaker off of the website, you know, because I wa- I didn't have it because I gave it to you. And I'm thinking they don't have any clue based on that.
No.
Other than an application comes along with this and what you have to do, do it. So.
Yeah, this is elderly, so not for disabled.
I didn't know. So I just put that one. I guess that's worth studying.
You say that circuit breaker is just.
This is an elder. No, I'm going to say, yeah, if I'm asking, that's good.
Yeah. Well, that would might grow. So don't take that as a fact. So we could, if we think that this is something that the town should do. For those that are disabled.
Right, because the the state is only for homeowners. Right.
That disabled, is that disabled as well?
No, right, no.
This is elderly.
Yeah.
Right, this is not, it has nothing to do with.
Disabled. Is a couple pages before this one.
Mm hmm.
Where. The existing program. The disabled. It's a. Thousand dollar property exemption. They wind it to three thousand. And then there's then basically it's for disabled veterans. Where the the benefit can go up. I guess of you.
Right, you have here.
Yes.
One thousand probably three thousand.
I do have some numbers along those lines from Darryl uh, or what. It's hard to get it clarified. I was asking, how much overlap is there between? Senior veterans, disabled, and he said, well, he didn't have that. Um, that way, but he did tell you that out of the sixty one homeowners. Twenty three of, in that program, twenty three of them were veterans, but there are two hundred eighty nine people getting the veterans. Some veterans. Veterans uh.
Exemption.
Exemption. There were thirty disabled and one blind. They were included in the residential lots. Number that I had and that then there were eight or nine affordable housing units, but they're also included in the residential.
Right, right.
It's it's not. It it's not been written out that way. So you just a little bit of piece of paper. Right, here's this many. It's not, there's a chart of, well, this person is checks off senior disabled.
Right. And the other thing is a veteran could be, because they I think they still do this, I think they do their, you could be ten percent disabled. Because you you lost a function, you know, that.
Yeah.
And that would qualify them for one of these exemptions, but it is important to recognize, sorry about, these are exemptions. So that one thousand dollar exemption saves twenty eight dollars.
Yeah.
It's, you know, we it's very nice that we're doing this. But if somebody's. Subhuman disabled veteran, they're they're getting a two hundred eighty dollar tax break. So I mean.
That was one of the other things that Teresa told me was there are plenty of people that. Like we had talked about, keeping their privacy and they don't think it's worth. Putting out their information. Dollars. I I I can go, I haven't happened. I've heard the same thing from Cecilia. That there are many people that would apply, but they don't want anyone to know this.
Right. And and veterans, they also, if you are a hundred percent disabled, you do get money from the symbol from whatever organization.
Yes, you get attention.
Right.
Which is great.
Or any percentage of disability.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This will be.
Right. And a veteran doesn't have to be an old person.
They'll already get six thousand dollars while they're testing. It's equal work one hundred and seventy. Dollars.
But that's for, my husband looked into that and you told us for active veterans. I don't know what your character is it, but uh, he's a veteran and he's not either the father.
Yeah, my son's a veteran. He's, he doesn't.
Is there reimbursement to the town for the programs?
No, not. And there, the interesting thing is that they're mandatory from the state. They've got to do it. Except for the circuit breaker. There's no one.
I should clarify that it was on a vehicle. You could take one vehicle and have a tax exempt. And that was what I did. So that should does get these six thousand dollars off his assessment. Yes.
Right.
So. What do you think about the, on the proposed? I thought that the. On the census data that you got. The, which I, by the way, the other thing, I'm thinking we're going to have a pretty different report here because we're also going to include that they write up by the state. The census data, we're going to have some information about surrounding towns. About all that here, just to make four copies then.
Well, I'm thinking about something. Circuit breaker is there by the state. I figured. When was the age, when the residency, how long a person's been? I'm saying it should be twelve years.
Why, why twelve?
My reasons were, one, a person who's in town, twelve continuous years is paid. Through that school system, which is the biggest tax burden on the town. I was here paying four weeks. Seeing, usually seeing being sixty five, this could already go on the law and you probably already paid for this or it paid for it. We have grandchildren and they have that, not for the parents, not for the grand grandparents. Plus, it could be tactically, being that we have a circuit breaker from the state. Our local could be as honest as it before under whatever guidelines we give for it. We also.
Which is what we're doing.
Right, that's what.
That's exactly what we're doing.
This, there's two steps here, Brian. If I could just, we want me to come up with the. The. Breakdown about how we want to give money to individuals. By what percentage? And then we can clarify what would the criteria be besides income? So to your point, you said twelve years, okay, I mean, I'm. So that, so it's, it's uh, we have to do that. We've got to come up with. Some additional criteria.
So that particular criteria would be based on a local program and not the state. So our local program would say, if you fall within this category, you have to be. The sixty five years or over or live within the town. Ten to whatever number of years you're saying.
Um.
On state or ring one.
Right, but he's saying.
Right, suggesting to get the additional.
To get the additional coverage.
Because if you, I think if you put it. If we just change the numbers on here. With too many people in, I think, I'm thinking about the board playing it home. What would, what would be pleasing for them? I mean, later on, I want to change here. Would it be criteria, want a real criteria, hundred people, this one effect? I I.
Well, I'm sure they're going to ask that question. Unfortunately, we're not really, no one can give them an answer because we don't know who's going to apply.
And we don't know who falls in that category.
Right. So the best we can do, why I think ties of your rate is to take. People that are there now. And see what that does to us. You know, the limit. Even though we're raising the income, the limit goes from twelve fifty. In this example, maybe it's fifteen hundred. I'm I'm again. Open for conversation, I'm not for sure. Um. But it would be a two thousand dollar maximum credit. And depending on what. The level of taxes there could be below seven fifty, but the the biggest dinner. So. If we just take the individuals that are here. The sixty one people that know. Um, and we put them in here based on the data that. Darryl has. Darryl's idea was to just double it. And it would cost the town fifty thousand dollars if we if we just doubled it. Then the twelve fifty. That gets doubled. So now it's your twenty five hundred instead of what we're saying is two thousand. But under our, under this example. We're just giving it to a little bit more money to a few more people. So I I I think it's going to come down and I'll, I'll be very happy to work with Darryl and kind of buggle these numbers. It's a pretty easy spreadsheet. I think this will end up being. Within ten thousand dollars of what Dallas said, just by double it. So. And I don't think we get much more accurate than that because we don't know who's going to walk in and say. Now that's two thousand dollars, someone would say, I'm going in. Yeah, I'm going in there. So.
If we just change income levels and that is, and that other criteria, because what is that now affects someone who's one of those fifty fifty people or some. Doesn't qualify because we've changed some of the rules, but maybe makes you eligible.
Leave them, the proposal is more generous.
The the on just income, but I'm saying that your age and residency and all.
Yeah.
I think that should all remain the same. So we don't bump anyone out of this.
I I'm well, I agree with you, but that's something we got to vote on as far as a group.
Okay.
I I don't think we should do that either. I think we shouldn't exclude anybody that's already currently.
Brian was talking about changing some of the rules.
Or suggesting.
Only I think on the. Well, I if I'm right, correctly, I guess, it would be only on what work the local program because we can't change the state. It would only be on a local program.
State.
Right.
They already get that.
Right.
I'm just trying to get more people included as far as make it simple. Most of the things I read from the other town, but it isn't yet this one thing.
If you go back a couple pages. Here's the spreadsheet.
Alright.
What's some of the.
Go back or go forward.
He went to the report.
Okay. Terminology, you know, members. Yeah. That's the fire department. Okay. Yeah.
Yep.
Got it.
And then. The next page. Is a little red.
Yeah, other towns that do other things. Right, yeah.
So. You don't, you need to the back of the table, yeah, to the back, back of the.
Well, there's, there's the rest of it.
You don't find it.
Next time I'll load the pages.
Yeah.
One of my concerns too is. When when you get the circuit breaker people, they and they fall under the local that we do. Okay, now they can, they can combine their credit. Now, if it goes over seventy five percent, so I can use the tax. Then it's got to be by state law, so they're leaning on the profit.
That's, I think, that's a different program. That's a different program.
From what I understand, this proposed at the bottom of this page. Is to have an increase. It's not a combined credit of two thousand plus twelve fifty.
That's right.
Correct.
I mean.
Not combined.
Some, some people will be able to do that.
No, not combining it. They would get just an increase in what their return adjustment would be.
Pretty sure. No, we're talking about two different things right now. The way he has this on the page, it's currently twelve fifty in that category. If we put in our proposed system at the bottom. It'll increase it by seven fifty to two thousand, not over, over, not this on top of that is what is suggested. This should be seven fifty, not an additional seven fifty.
No, in total.
Not in total, not in addition, a total. So the town would pay the difference between two fifty and seven fifty.
Instead of, well, what, if somebody were to come in. If somebody were to come in and make thirty-five thousand dollars. Under the current town pro, I mean, the current state program, they would be entitled to a seven hundred and fifty dollar credit, max. Under this example, that same person would be entitled to a two thousand dollar credit. Cause we up the.
Yeah, I, I understand, we're, we're looking at the chart. Two ways.
Okay.
I was looking at the person who was in the under twenty thousand, two hundred category.
They get twelve fifty.
They get twelve fifty.
Now they get two thousand.
Because we get two thousand, additional seven fifty.
Right.
Yes, because it's, it's because, oh, we're.
Looking at the same card.
Yes.
Different ways.
And that extra would be the town's.
The town's liability.
Pay, yes, and no, no reimbursement for the state.
And when you're in, I believe, when we look at that, you were looking at this, this added to this, yeah?
Yeah, no, 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 so, we're only placing that, one place, that's, that's why I'm trying to clarify, we're all looking at the same thing three different ways.
Right.
Yeah.
Which all that means is this needs to be clarified before it's.
That's right, right. Draft. And, and if I could suggest, when, when we do finalize this, and you put local, proposed local, or, you know, program.
Local option, yes, they turn it.
There's a suggestion, where, where the word proposed is, put in local proposed additional.
No, it would be total of that.
And, and no, but if you do an additional and then change these numbers to what it adds, because they're in those categories.
For that, I think that, no, I don't like that, because what, what we're trying to do here is to make it simple, and say, this is what. The public's gonna see, we can't, we do it both. Just gonna, I think, just.
I don't know if they see this, unless they went to the state.
The purpose is presenting it to the board finance, if you show them, here's the state reimburse program, and here's our proposed municipal act in, in addition to.
Right, well.
And then we could.
When I was, getting back to what Kai was talking about before. I am gonna show the impact of this, because they will see the total amount based on sixty-one people, and then they're going to see the state contribution. And then they're going to see the resulting town contribution, so that, I can do that for both of these.
Yeah, I would, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you gotta make it clear, that it, it says these optional property tax relief events are in addition to tax relief municipality.
Correct.
Right, but if you look at what this, some of the town, the surrounding towns do. You know, from Griswold, and again, this would be included to the. The, the, so me and Ford will see that. Not every town does anything, doesn't do a lot extra.
Yeah.
Um, it was interesting, in London, this is a couple of years old, in London, the budget was, they don't like any, anybody unless you're running, say, the land.
And, I know.
Not even state mandated program. And.
And there is another town, I think, that we've reported on, that they do have a, a residence limit on it, you know, I know, which one is that, after those, the paper march. Uh, but, you know, we could add that in, you know, because, I mean, God, unless we wanna get a lot of people coming in and help us pay taxes, and we're gonna get a tiny bit of money back. It might be a lower.
Yeah, so I, I know. I guess, maybe, I'd like that one more discussion about twelve year versus, you know. Versus they just moved here. There is an argument to make, that a senior citizen shows up and says, I'm gonna buy a house today because I can get a nice tax break. Um, they're not sending anybody to school.
It's a pain.
A painful, yeah. Proposition, where they move in, and if we give them a little tax break. So they're not five hundred, seven hundred dollars worth of taxes, they're still paying free. But nobody's going, nobody's going into the school, so.
And there's.
Is that a bad thing? Yeah, is that a bad thing?
I think for seniors, I guess, I think, a lot of seniors have been in town any year.
Right, no, I didn't.
And I think that's kind of, since they paid taxes all over the years, they lost something, they didn't really get any break. Then, it would help. You know, when they get the seniors, yes, and I'm using. Much of the services really, maybe, or maybe that. It's like that.
Well, then, I think, I'm sorry.
We're just gonna.
Take your thoughts.
We, we kinda skipped on one thing, and we wanna include. One hundred percent disabled in this, or do we wanna just say that that's something that should be considered?
I think they, I think that's a separate.
Yeah, I think, I think the state has a separate.
They have a separate program, yes.
And we participate.
Well, they don't.
Very quiet, there's a difference.
Yeah, well, we're not very quiet. Right, well, that, that's that list that was there, but, we don't get any money from state, those are all supported by the town tax. The, the state doesn't provide any money to them. Mandatory but unfunded. As, as I read it, I might mean, I could be completely wrong.
There's, there's no, no property back.
Example.
So, I think what we have to not focus on, again, is the whole school thing, I think, as I was not hung up on that too, I don't have kids in this town, I'm here eight years. I've never had children, it's my choice to be here, and, yeah, it's a bone of contention with me, that there's a lot of money spent on a school with minimal attendance. It is, it's a bone of contention, but I'm not gonna be the only, I mean, not gonna change because of me, do you know what I'm saying?
Well, my feeling is that, you know, education is crucial, and if you wanna have. Some young people going, going up to be able to say, you know, do, build these position, everything, education is crucial, I think we're all the same, so.
There's a speech of the week.
I know you did.
But what, what they say, make education expensive.
Yeah.
You know, or. Let's see, somebody's fifty-five years old. Um, and there's some people in school, they graduate, become doctors. That one's gonna save you fifteen years, so, you know.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying schools are gonna be great.
Well, it's the primary reason, because it's making it valuable.
It's, it's private, I mean, it don't have to, I just use it as a hand, all right, um. But, I look at, look at the things that seniors get hit with in the, okay, especially if you're a lower income. You're gonna get hit with your social security, government controls that, if you're gonna get a little bit more money, but they also control, Medicare constantly goes up. Not enough, they, they pay eighty, twenty, but. You better buy a supplement. So the supplements, we have a control, but that's the, sure, it just keeps going up, you know, so the seniors have their own. Things that hurt them, and then looking at this tax relief is, okay, this gives them a little more tax relief. Maybe they can buy their pills, maybe they can buy the supplementary insurances. Well, you know, um, so, there's all those reasons, that's why I said, you know, I mean, put a twelve year thing on it, or ten, or whatever we put on, we're gonna put more. I think than just one or five, because when we move here, hey, I'll buy a house in one year, you know, they're five years, they're all with that. For a person that's been here years, years.
It's not really that significant.
No, nobody's gonna move here.
Really, nobody's gonna, it's like, it's like everybody's moved here, but the other key is, is affordable. That's really, I mean, you wouldn't necessarily need all these tax breaks and everything, if you had housing where people and elderly people could live at an affordable price and have services, you want, at the facility that they're living in. That would make a huge difference, it makes me, that they do it all over the, the country.
It wasn't full, yeah.
That'd be something that, for the longer term, maybe even for the economic development, is that. If they did a fifty-five year old or older development, that those houses would get a substantial tax break, because they don't lose any services, they all go to school. You know, so.
And I think that's out of our scope.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Doing the affordable housing, they're saying you can't do that, when you can do that, but you don't get full credit for that, for those.
If it's affordable housing. And the fifty-five plus, we have two different things entirely.
There's no guarantee that a senior is this in a lot of town, yeah.
Right.
And there's no guarantee of what, they could do moving.
Right, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
We don't know, and that's out of, that's kinda out of our realm of concern, I really.
Right, but I mean, since it was brought up, I mean, it.
Right, right.
It is, it is. So, can we just get to, I mean, I've got a couple of decisions here, you know, but applicable to this conversation right now. Again, I don't have the new numbers, I have the old numbers. Talking about a two thousand dollar tax credit. And the majority of people in town back in twenty eighteen are paying between three thousand and seven thousand dollars, so a two thousand dollar tax credit is, is great, submit.
You know what?
Uh, that, that's a huge amount of money. We're looking at it as twelve hundred dollars or less than, or, you know, two thousand dollars, if they, if they make a higher number, five hundred dollars, but if they're only paying.
Two thousand?
Far less, it depends on where they fit in this strategy, and we don't have this information, and, and we don't know their financial situation, we don't know where they fall into this, so, we don't know.
You can make an argument, I mean, not, I would. An assumption.
No assumptions.
Well, that if somebody is making thirty-five thousand all over year. They might not be in our house, but they're paying seven thousand dollars in taxes.
Right.
Right, so. It's even more, to your point, so their tax bill might only be thirty-five hundred dollars. So it'd be a very big break. And so the question is, is that.
In which case, in which case, that goes to Brian's point, so you wanna offer that to someone who just moved into town, or is it for someone who's been paying into the system and wanna try to keep them here in town?
Oh, yeah, that's.
That's why I'm bringing this up, so that's why more than one year is.
I, I think the state said more than one year.
The state says, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because they're thinking of state residents, if, that's all they care about is we're in state. Um.
Well, I, I want to see who's moving far.
Right, the income tax money, that's what they're.
That was, that was my question, on the census, when you got the report on the North Stonington.
Yeah.
So, I, right, so you, if I'm not, correct me if I'm wrong, we really don't have a, like, a real poverty level in our town.
Awesome.
No, I don't know if that's the right terminology, you know what I'm saying, it's, uh.
Oh, okay.
You don't understand what you're saying. I think there's some information in that.
Well, and we're, I think we should include.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Well, according to this, take of this.
We have. Thirty-six percent of the household. Under fifty thousand dollars, you know. Now, that's hard to.
No, it's not, no, I didn't, I need to help out with the right word, but.
It might as well be.
Yes.
The one thing, um. Let me just. Six, six point three percent of the people in North Stone. Are below the poverty line.
Over the.
It's a great, but then. And it could, and I know.
Well, ten percent of the children are on the poverty line. Zero percent sixty-five or lower.
Hmm, yeah, that's interesting.
Not under poverty.
Say, say that again?
No one, no one living here. Is under the poverty line, but sixty-five or over.
So that could be why we only have sixty-one people participating in the program. So it could be we're not, we shouldn't, we can't worry about increase, if there is a rate, if, you know, for them, and if not. We can show the data on what it would cost us on the census in sixty-one people.
Our goal is to take care of the people in need.
Right.
Uh-huh.
Right?
So then we're, so we're missing. That's six point three percent of the population, and the, and the kids, we're missing that entirely.
When it, if the, if all the focus is on the state programs, it's seniors, disabled, veterans.
Their families are.
And families that live in the category and they focus on that under affordable housing, and that's, that's part of the idea of. What I'm working on per lot, per situation, because when you look at it that way. It's, it's, it's no other criteria involved on the king before litter.
The families are. Ten percent, six percent or ten percent. They've got to be receiving state aid.
Most likely.
Yeah, I mean, unless, it'd be an exception, if they're not.
Yeah. It's not, it's not a lot, it's really not.
No, no.
Of course, you're listening, they're not. No.
But, you know, once things changed in their life, then.
Yeah, but then we, you had the statistics, whether it's what, three apartments, you know, there's so many things that were these people living, but they really know that families or whatever, because, you know.
A little, little housing there.
Yeah, not.
That's one of the three. Family.
They're not cheap houses either, the rents are not cheap.
No.
I looked them up for a friend.
Twelve hundred.
Yeah, a hundred. I would have a couple, yeah, it could be, I don't know if they're different sizes, but what did you find out?
I think one of them is fifty.
How much?
Eight fifty.
Eight fifty.
That's right.
So the standard is the, the spaceship looking things on one side, and then there's the little cottages that they just reviewed. And what the differences are between them.
Right. Anyway, okay.
So, let's get, let's.
This says here, I, I, I hope we're in the guidelines, because it's from the state. Where they say we can set our own limits. The whole amount of tax relief the town can provide is limited to ten percent of the total property tax normally assessed.
That's why there's the maximum and minimum.
Okay, and a participant cannot receive more property tax relief from one or more programs, then the participant will normally pay property tax.
Yeah, they, yeah.
Towns are required to place a lien on the house for the participant, if tax relief is more than seventy-five percent of the tax holder. So you have to have a lien, and if they give these two, or three, they have.
Yeah, that's what I, I already, yeah. Falling to this, yeah.
But we have to have it written in, uh. Well, well, there you go.
We, um. We need to acknowledge that, in our report. Um.
Same.
Oh, that, yeah, that's, I'm gonna make a nice, find a nice topic, but I don't have a nice one. I think, Bob, with that, that should be part of it, that should be part of our report.
Right, and I'm wondering if that, we could pull up and you get a, for the property, you know.
No, I've looked it up, I can't find it, they don't, it's, it's nowhere to be found. So I gotta find some.
Even if it were the, the Connecticut thing you hear.
It's got one in twenty, thirteen thousand and seven.
Yeah, I was looking for stuff too, it's like, I don't have any recent stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They've got, they've got something two thousand and seven, and they got a couple things in two, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
Right.
But it's on pretty name.
Yeah. What if you look, it could be full office of the aging.
Well, well, but, I'm. Bob got that, so, I'm just gonna see if he's got a.
Cleaner copy, I gotcha, yeah.
So, if we could, if, if we could just focus back on, right, is, so. Just to make some, get some movement here, um. What. The local proposed breakdown, is this something that we should go with, work, change? What's the committee sense on, on, what I came up with, and I, by the way, sixty-three, seven fifty is seventy-five percent of median income, so that's where I came up with that.
Should we know on here what the medium income is, that we got, where we got the sixty-three, seven fifty?
Yeah, just put it. Eighty five, two, two, seven, two, six, seven.
And I think that'd be good important information to add, whatever we can highlight.
So how do you?
Fine with that, yeah, I mean, honestly.
It's zero to thirty five.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I mean, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay with that, it's not, you know, again, you're looking at what the difference is that they would have made, you know? Um, cause if someone. Only got, so it would help the people who were only getting the thousand, you know?
Yep.
So I don't have a problem with that. Anybody else? Going once.
I'm just comparing numbers.
So the existing Ross Harington is a circuit. They need to get the circuit breaker.
Now they get, now Brian, what I'm saying is, what I think we're going to suggest here is that. This lower one is now the North Stonington program. Is this, is, is now, now it's, it's North Stonington circuit breaker program.
This would be our local, which would. Take this and inclusive to this.
In total.
So then you would just say the difference between, let's say, take it twenty thousand to twenty seven, one hundred, they would get a thousand. Under our program, we're saying they would get two thousand. So they would get an additional, maximum, they would get an additional thousand from the local program.
So the circuit breaker would be an effective one.
Yes, it would, it would, if they just, it's really, Brian, you have to look at it in terms of what the state would pay us. Versus what the town would add to that.
Right, if you put proposed circuit breaker plus local option, does this make sense to you?
So if you were getting twelve hundred and fifty. You would get two thousand, and the difference is the difference is what the. Local program would cause the town. Whether it does not.
This goes away.
The top one goes away completely.
Yeah, it goes away.
Look at it this way, the way this is. Well, the circuit breaker would be portion would be reimbursed, the additional thousand is. Is, is the proposal of.
Another way to do our local action is. To. Leave. Breakout that they have, that we have here on our existing one. And just change. The dollar amounts, to two thousand, two thousand, because. You get to thirty three, eight hundred. Cause the form goes up. And fifteen hundred.
Another way to do it would be to add a column to the elderly home loan program, the circuit breaker up top. Put a column over on the bar right. Just before the financial impact, and call it. Plus local option. And then set twelve fifty to a thousand.
No, that's, I'm not just, I, I just think, the whole idea is to make one. Thing, this is what the program is, when we start expanding. Something that doesn't exist anymore.
Circuit breaker is always going to exist, that's the only thing we're getting, no, it's still gonna be there reimbursed by the state. Our local option is the additional benefit. That's what's confusing, Brian.
What to the individuals?
When you present it to the public, that's a whole nother story, but when you're presenting it to the board finance and to someone who needs to understand the reimbursement part of it. It needs to be laid out that way, they're not gonna see it.
Perhaps if we could illustrate an example.
You could.
That that might be helpful.
And that would be a bottom, you know.
Let me play with this, with Daryl's information, uh, as far as what the, the doll impact's going to be by number of taxpayers. And the dollar. And so I'll have that for our next meeting, the reason why I'm.
Talking about it this way is when we looked at what Daryl handed us, the elderly home loan program. And we're, we're wondering, where's the circuit breaker?
Yeah.
Because we were looking at it with fresh eyes, now that we think we understand it. We have to put it in a format that someone who's never seen this before is gonna be able to look at it and understand. There's a state reimbursed program called circuit breaker, and then there's what we've just added to it. If we don't present it that way, someone down the road.
Yeah, I see what you're trying to do, and the only thing I'm thinking is, we did it in a landscaping format. You have a little bit more room, still leaving on this page, and just adding the column that would be state program. And you would might, you might wanna, and if you use these same numbers. You can't use those same numbers, because we're bringing them up.
Right.
All right, why don't you do what you were thinking?
Yeah, let me, let me play around with the presentation, do I get the sense though that, is this, and the reason I did it this way was. We wanna give more money to the lower income people, and we want to expand the people that get help. To the point where we're helping people that are at seventy five percent.
Yes.
Of the median income.
Right.
So that's why I'm looking at sixty three thousand.
Yeah.
I see your numbers here, and I, I think they're right, so I'm still a little confused, I'm slow. I think it's gonna depend too on, on what. What the qualifications are as far as. Like I say, residency.
Well, let's start about, let's start by that for just, before we do that, I just wanna ask one quick question, I think this will be a quick one. But are we okay with what was proposed for the firing? This additional. Twenty six thousand dollars, but we, we all agree that that's something we wanna do.
Because they want to achieve uncertainty, what do you wanna do? So I'm stuck with the technical thing to ask for.
Well, I think it is. I would say maybe somehow in our verbiage, it really has no impact on what we're proposing to do. We were not charged to, we don't, we don't need to present this, because the fire department is presenting that they're on.
Yeah, right, I guess they wanted to know if. I get the sense that they were looking for to divorce it somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
So I ended in the write offs, hey.
Yeah.
It's, it's really more a fee. I mean, a payment for service.
Right.
A nominal payment, not a tax break.
Right.
That's the way I look at it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we okay with leaving it at that? Well, I'm supporting it.
That's a real.
Well, our, our charge was. Tax relief committee, it doesn't say elderly tax relief. So Bob. Asked him, asked them to come here, I think the finance committee office, at least.
We should go just in North.
Clearly written in our presentation and recording. That this wasn't our, I, not that it wasn't our idea, we presented to us during the course of our meeting, there's one of the other potential options. That's out there. Cause they're the ones that are gonna make these decisions, we can't assign any of this, we're just making suggestions.
So we're gonna agree on that, we're, we're gonna do that, okay, so now, let's go back, just spend a couple of minutes. What kind of criteria do you think? We need to. Have on this elderly program. For people qualified besides income, but one would be. Residency.
Length of residency.
So the people currently under this program probably have to be here a year.
On the top one, yeah.
And so to get the additional ben, local benefit.
Yeah.
How long will we think they should?
That's my thought. Well, it's not gonna affect a lot of people.
Yeah, we do know that. Zero percent of the population, and, and we're sixty five is in the poverty model, so.
So we can, again. Present it with a number, it can all be tweaked by the board finance.
Uh, what if we do something to additional benefit? Should have a. An additional residency requirement.
Well, we had a whole.
Between five to ten years, something on.
And it could be only the property, the house.
Well, it's good, yeah, that's actually, yeah, primary residents.
Yeah.
Right?
Even if they have the house under. The senior's name, the kid's name. It's still there. It's still there. It's still, who's the kid?
Well, it's gotta be the, if it's, it's gotta be the primary resident. Primary residents of the person that's sixty five, so it can't be a house, I don't think it should be a house, say. To even have their landlords, where they own the house and. See the ridge, but they were living at the Sonicare. So, oh, that shouldn't, they lived there for a long time, but the primary residents now moved to Sonicare. That shouldn't be inappropriate. It's not their primary residence. So it's gotta be the primary resident, so.
Of the house they are living in.
They need to turn, be directed owner of, or hold life use in the real estate or like, yeah, that's how they characterize.
Yeah, yeah. Cause if you can stay the house and they have their kids living in it, the kids are probably paying rent or whatever, it's gonna fly.
And it also doesn't apply if they lived in Florida for six months. Cause that's the primary residence.
Right, so we're gonna have a hundred and eighty three days residency, then, now.
Well, if they have a private residence and they're going to Florida, they're not in this program.
One point, both likely, verified. The offspring living with the elderly parent. I've been there, in the caregiving situation, so yes, I did. Have a different residence, but I, my wife and I spent most of our time. There, living with my in-laws, taking care of them until they die.
But, but they were living there.
They were living there, that was their. Just because I was living there cannot mean disqualification, thinking that I'm out making money somewhere, because you were there. We were caregivers, we were not.
And then there's life use, where the parents can turn the house over to the kids, but they have life use, so they're living there, so that's still their primary residence.
And that was mentioned in that.
Yeah, but you can give somebody life use, they move away. And it creates a situation where you can't effectively sell a property, so the current, the person living someplace else, they're protected. But that asset won't be sold out. Cause they, they can still rely on. People back there. I, I think it gets back to saying.
They have to be living there.
Primary risk, if they're not living. So they've gotta be in there. Anything else?
It should be total. Income of the house, right?
Total household income.
Well, if I'm living there and I'm adding money to it. Yeah, we won't know that. We're not gonna, no one's gonna record that.
It'll be the total.
Right, that would be, that's the person who's owning the house.
Only, only way to monitor that would be the voting. Or credit those other individuals who are living in that house, voting from that house.
Also, it would be the top, who's on the title of the property.
Well, I'm talking about a regulatory oversight, and we're saying that. If that person's living in the house and helping support and pay the bills, how would you ever know that? If they don't have another residence, then they're living there.
Right.
It's residency again, as a criteria.
But it's also homeownership. They don't own the home.
Right.
So we'd have to still go to the primary resident, which would be the title owner or the property owner of the house.
And then, when you get to the financial category, how are you gonna, how is this gonna be overseen? Right now, it's done by bringing in their incomes.
It would be the same.
Same thing.
Same criteria.
Daryl's problem, the process of doing that wouldn't change as far as the dollar.
All right, what we could propose a three to five year. Um, as Anne suggested, and we can let the finance department add or. Give their input on it.
Three to five? Three to seven, cause you want, he wants to make it.
Say even three years, four or five years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, 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 Ryan's saying he wants twelve.
There really isn't. We come here, we, we're saying sixty five years old, we come here at, what, fifty three?
Yeah.
It's a long timeframe for, when you feel into the elderly. Yeah, and there's a lot of transition, people will move, people will stay in one place.
The, the average person moving out of seven years. Average, that's from my mortgage days of my pantry, that's, that's. On, in today's society, average seven years. Which is amazing.
We're not gonna get people moving into this ten, or in this category of that are on a home. At this point in our life, so we're gonna really rely on the people who are already here. Right, you hear my point, they're not gonna be moving into this town, we have to worry about how long they live here, but they're not gonna be moving in, if they're under this. Not a lot of, and buying the house.
Well, they may be living here already, when I say.
And they're already in the program.
Well, they weren't in progress when my father died, but the income goes.
But they're still here.
So the state program.
I know, my mother's dead now, but when, when she was here, my father died, she was able to get under the, the program.
Right.
As we're in.
Right. So that's not, I guess that's, it's, it's what we're so talking about, you're talking about, and somebody.
With a tax system.
Living here for ten, fifteen years.
Yeah, I, I just thought of something, you may not be able to do anything different than like one year. I think, I think, I think we're gonna be bound with a one year. Cause the state program says you gotta give it to them if they've been in the state for one year.
Not a local option.
A local, a local additional option, so the minimum, they're gonna get.
Yeah, we're only looking for the local option.
So I think we can write our own local option.
Yeah, that's true, right, well, for writing some local options, so say there's. What maybe we should do is then say, at the discussion of residency. That the minimum residency is one year. Because of the, the basic state program. And then the additional town program would, would have these additional requirements. Cause we can't stop somebody that moved into the town, and says, okay, I live here, they've been here for one year, they're gonna get the state circuit breaker, if they qualify.
Right.
They're getting circuit breaker.
Right.
So, that much we have to acknowledge. And then from there.
I don't think we're gonna have to worry about any of those people.
I think it's a root point.
The numbers.
I think there was seven, some were ten.
And besides a residency, the primary residency. Full household income. Will, 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 anything else we need to consider?
Did we come up with a, with a time limit? For residency?
Uh, I'm going to write it up as one year for the state circuit breaker program continues. The additional program. What's the committee's, we should pick a one of us.
Seven.
Seven.
I think, you better. What if we phrase it a min, a minimum of five, having been here for at least five years? Before you can qualify for the actual.
Additional town.
For the additional town.
For a long time.
I just think we, I, I. The more I say we don't need a time limit on it, I know, cause not gonna be an influx of it, you know, they're getting already here. Yeah, I don't think we're gonna go around a lot of other insurance, I mean, I don't.
That may change, we were so.
Yeah.
So what if, what if we don't? In the number and just say, suggest that? There should be additional residency to, to, to qualify for the additional benefits should consider. Consider a length of residency, an increase in residency. To qualify. And like then.
See, I guess, yeah, well, it's, it's there maybe, if they have this small amount of money. Then? Why don't we wanna help? I mean, it's, it's, it's like they, they're, they don't have the money. They've been here three years. And they, and they got, they're making twenty thousand dollars a year. Why don't we wanna help them?
Yeah. They don't think they're three years, they're not re, moving into this town.
Yeah.
But it's not.
Something could happen, they could, they could have moved here, something happens and all of a sudden they're not making any money.
Yeah. I, I think it's a root point, I don't think we need to change anything on it.
You say leave it a year?
I leave it a year, I don't think you need to.
In that case, cause it's, it's, people are living. Day to day. It's not like they're, we're not helping anybody that's in a financially good place.
Right, right.
So I, I just think, those are the people. They're our neighbors. Whether they've been here for a year or twenty years, they need our help, right?
Yeah.
So I, I'm kinda inclined to say.
It just should be exactly what the circuit breaker is, this is just our local option.
Yeah.
Period.
A local benefit, additional benefit.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's my, that's my.
They're not moving here if they're.
We need a vote on that, I don't.
Yeah, I think, I think we're gonna have, I think. I, I, I'd like someone to.
I like.
Do some motions, cause we're.
Right.
That the resident has to live here at least five years.
To be eligible for town.
Be eligible for, for, for local option.
Right.
And is there a second?
We can have this.
No, that goes, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that right? That's in second. Discussion. I know, we've discussed the.
Take a vote, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of the option? All those vote? So, and another, another.
I think the motion that we have a residency requirement of one year, the eligible for the town option.
Second.
Or discussion?
Please.
No, this bad.
All discussion? All those in favor? All?
Okay. Get passes.
Get passes.
Otherwise, maybe more than said.
Exactly. Is there anything else we need to talk about tonight?
No.
You guys, you're definitely gonna have, they need a, a lien, one of the seven, but if they get.